Good afternoon, everyone. I see we have a quorum.
Councilwoman, real quick, let me start if you don't mind. I have a four o'clock with the Ravens and PCs of people to go overseas to elementary school at four, not trying to rush. So if you see me step off a little early, that's the reason why.
Oh, I think, I think we'll be finished by then. We have three.
Okay, just want to get your heads up, that's all. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the Council, Representative of the Sixth Council District, and I also serve as Chairperson for the Economic and Community Development Committee. We are here this afternoon for the following bills. Twenty-one dash zero zero seven one, twenty-one dash zero zero nine zero, and twenty-one dash zero one hundred. The hearing for Bill twenty-one dash zero zero eight three has been canceled. And I also would want to mention that I'm going to chair the first bill, and then I have to leave for an urgent engagement that I have to attend. And Chair Mark Conway is going to chair the remainder of the hearing for the final two So in attendance for the members of the committee, we have John Bullock, Councilman John Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman and Chair Mark Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do I see Councilman Dorsey, Nachet, Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Stokes.
I am here, and he said Councilman Ramos.
Oh, I am so sorry, Councilwoman Ramos. Do I see any other members present?
Dorsey's here.
Okay, welcome, Councilman Dorsey. Okay, members of the President's Office, we have Nikki Thompson, Director of Legislative Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I see Lucy Font, Staff Assistant for Legislative Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I see, I'm trying to go down the list here. Okay. And representing the Mayor's Office, I see Natasha Mihu, the Director of Governmental Relations.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Nina Thimnulis, the Deputy Director of Government Relations.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before we begin, I would like to remind you that if you're not speaking, please keep yourself on mute. Please do not take yourself off of mute unless you are recognized. When recognized, please identify yourself and the agency or organization that you represent. Once you have finished speaking, please put yourself back on mute. And let's begin with Bill number twenty-one dash zero zero seven one, the street encroachment of seventeen oh seven Eastern Avenue, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the construction and maintenance of a portion of a building projecting into the public right-of-way on the south side of Eastern Avenue on the property known as seventeen oh seven Eastern Avenue. This bill was introduced on May third, 2021. The bill was sponsored by the Council President at the request of the administration, specifically the Department of Transportation. Do committee members have any questions at this time? If not, we'll go ahead into the agency reports, and we'll start with the City Solicitors' Office.
Hello, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Rulie from the City Solicitors' Office, and we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. The Department of Transportation, and I think that's Liam.
Madam Chair, great to be here. Thank you so much. This is kind of DOT Committee Hearing Day, so we've got a few bills here, so we're really appreciative.
So Liam, when you, as you're explaining, could you please explain the, go over the actual encroachment?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, so, yes, Liam Davis, DOT, with Baltimore City DOT. So what happened in this instance is a licensed surveyor, licensed Maryland surveyor, went out for the private property owner, conducted a survey, found that the, there was an extension, a encroachment on public right-of-way by approximately 1.6 feet, and that's extending into that southern side of Eastern Avenue. It is within, this is the standard process, this legislation is the standard process of encroachment, is founded between, between zero and four feet, this is the standard process, to kind of acknowledge the encroachment and work with DOT Right-of-Way Division to ensure that, that everything is accounted for properly. So there is a, this legislation is necessary for DOT to enter and, you know, complete the right-of-entry agreement process and execute the encroachment ordinance. This is not, not too many, nothing extremely influential from this bill, it's kind of to correct and acknowledge this encroachment on our records, is essentially what this legislation does.
Thank you. Any questions to Liam from the committee? Moving on to the Parking Authority of Baltimore City.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Arco San from the Parking Authority, and we do not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you. Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals.
Madam Chair, Nina Thimnulis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMZA stands by its report in deferring to the Planning Department.
Thank you. The Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our bill report. We have no objection to the passage of this bill.
Thank you. Department of Planning.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, Eric T. Sec of the Department of Planning. We have no objection. We note that this is in a local CHAP district. If there should be any improvements to be made, just as an advisory, it would need further review from our CHAP staff.
Okay, thank you. The Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Nina Thimnulis, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I don't believe a member of the Fire Department staff is on this call, but they stand by their report and have no objection to the passage of the bill.
Thank you. Do the committee members have any comments or questions for any of the city agencies?
Madam Chair.
Is that Councilman Dorsey?
Conway.
Oh, I'm sorry. Conway, Councilman Conway.
Sure, just, nothing crazy, I'm just curious how this happens, how we end up in this situation, to begin with, where we've got the encroachment and didn't know it.
Sure, so a neighborhood, and this again, Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT, when you look at some of the very historic areas of the city, like Fells Point, Jonestown, even parts of downtown, those were originally three separate towns, and eventually became Baltimore, and Baltimore, as everyone knows, annex land over there, you know, a couple centuries. But particularly in these, these like historic neighborhoods, this will be found from time to time, where, you know, over the course of, whether it was 100 years ago, 50 years ago, 20 years ago, every once in a while, you'll see where a private property has encroached on public right-of-way. When that happens, the general, what the city will do, what our Right-of-Way Division will do generally, is get fair market share for that, kind of, for that kind of lost right-of-way space in the, in the agreement that is made with the property owner. But the long story short is, I'm not going to say it's common, but I would say it's more common in your neighborhoods where, like even, like Federal Hill, where it was designed, like the neighborhood started developing before the city probably had a broad survey done. So sometimes we'll, we'll find things that, it's not, it's not super common, but every once in a while, you'll find things that you didn't know were there in the records. Not to mention, the city did lose a lot of records during the 1904 fire, so that also complicates things for the really old properties.
Thank you for explaining. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, the committee will.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, Liam, I'm trying to read the plat, the, the plans here. Can you just say one more time exactly where the encroachment is? I just don't understand it.
Extending on the right-of-way, it should be extending into the right-of-way. I have the plat up on the south side of Broadway, immediately west of Register, there's, on the plats, they're labeled on the bill file, it should be labeled online, twenty-one dash zero zero seven one, seventeen oh seven Eastern Avenue. It'll show, it shows you kind of how the property extends, that reads just over a
I don't understand, because I'm looking at the plats.
It's under the word eastern.
It's under the.
Yeah, I see where the plats show Eastern Avenue. I don't really understand where anything is encroaching into Broadway.
Under E R N, there's an arrow.
There's a, it's a little block.
There's a little encroachment, a little block on the diagram.
I, I guess I'm not going to pretend to understand, but that's okay.
So we could, if it, I, I should also have David.
I would be interested to have somebody after the hearing, just help me read this plan a little bit better.
David Fram is the expert on this, so I'll make sure he gets it right up, and I can share it with the Chairwoman as well.
Uh, maybe I could help?
Sure, Eric, please.
Ah, go ahead, Eric.
So if you're looking at the plat, and I don't know if you happen to have it open, because this is not a colored line, it makes it a little bit harder to read. So the face of the building on Eastern Avenue is slightly thicker, and it has the boundary and distance that, north eighty-seven, seven minutes, twenty-five seconds east for thirty-three point one eight feet.
Uh-huh.
See that? That heavy line is the actual property boundary. The lighter line to the north of it is the one and a third feet into the right-of-way. So the face of the building, like, like a brick and a foot thick, is actually outside of the front property boundary into the right-of-way.
I see.
And to be truthful, it looks like the building to the east has the same problem.
Yes.
Maybe they already got covered, but that's what you're looking at. And then, in, on the right corner, the building is actually.
Little alley thing.
Yeah, the building jogs in a little bit, and there's like a little inlet between the two, and the property boundary is in the middle of that little pedway between the two buildings. So that's what you're looking at.
That's just bizarre, man.
It's old stuff.
Yeah, and I think Eric can attest, though, that this type of, these happen more so in historic parts of the city.
We have more accurate measurement potential today. I'm led to understand by surveyors that, you know, our technology today is a lot more precise than it used to once be.
Yeah.
And so, we, we opt here to retain ownership of that right-of-way and allow them to encroach on it, instead of making some agreement for a transfer of ownership of it to them?
So that's what's happening here. I think, you know, keeps open the, the possibility, should the city ever need the right-of-way again.
On Law Department, Hillary, did you want to, can you explain more on this?
Chair, I mean, you know, it's an option, right? So, real property, the, the right-of-way is inalienable under the Charter, so if you want to, you have to, you know, of course, close it and sell it, like we do in the opening and closing bills, but there's no requirement that we do that. So we can do either. We can either keep it and, and do, you know, an agreement or right-of-entry or whatever, or easement or whatever, or we can sell it. So it's circumstantial, you have both options most times.
And do we have a process by which we determine to go down one path versus the other when somebody approaches us, or when we have something like this come before us? This just seems so bizarre. I, I can't imagine a scenario in which the city would ever need to retake use of these absolutely useless little pieces of property that already have a building on them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear you, and there is a process, so there, there is a part of our updating and reformatting for APA includes regulations and public-facing processes for these types of instances. So I think, I think we will see that as the people, there will be more, that'll be more transparent, as we share the updated APA-formatted, public-facing rules. Again, like, it might, may seem insignificant, but if I recall correctly, I could be wrong here, I mean, you never know, because this is Eastern Avenue, if it was Fleet or Allison, I forget which block it was, where they were considering running the red line, every inch is precious, in terms of public right-of-way. So you just never know when you have a major project that might need that extra couple inches.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey, or is that enough, or if you can.
Sure, that's fine.
Word on the side.
Thank you, Eric, for walking me through the plan there, I appreciate it.
The committee will now take public testimony, if there's any, and just a few instructions here. Computer users, please use the raise hand function if you wish to testify. When called upon, please state your name. Attendees who call in by phone will be unmuted one by one. Callers will hear two beeps when unmuted. If you do not wish to testify, please say so. If you do wish to testify, state your name. Do we have any raised hands?
No.
No? And are there any callers? So caller number two, you're being unmuted. Did you want to testify?
Councilwoman, this is David Fram. Is this, is this unmuted?
Yes, yes, David.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. So I just wanted to clarify the Honorable Councilman Dorsey's question, and, and Eric, please correct me if I'm wrong, the building was, the building had burned, and the Department of Housing and Community Development had determined that the building was, was and needed to be demolished, and in the demolition councilman, that's when the encroachment was identified. So the, long story made short, the, the encroachment was there, and we would not have been made aware of it, but for the unfortunate fire that caused the building to be totally rehabilitated. If we had demanded that the building be built within the property line, there would have been a gap that would have had to be filled in with something. So the cleanest way to proceed was to allow the encroachment to remain under the Housing Code, and to allow the building to be put back in the same position or location where it was prior to the, prior to the burning, sir.
That makes total sense. I appreciate that explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I could, I was jumping up and down until the Honorable Councilwoman Middleton let me come, just to let you all know. Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for joining, David.
Thank you. Checking for any other callers.
It's Madam Chair.
Did you want to testify on this bill, twenty-one dash zero zero seven one?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, this is about the right-of-way.
Oh, okay, we haven't gotten there yet. Thank you. And that is it. Excuse me, can we, can you mute yourself, please?
I love this song.
Hello? Hello? Okay, we took care of that one. Is there a motion to move the bill?
Move the bill favorable.
Second.
Second.
Move the bill favorable, but Dorsey, who was the second?
Conway.
Conway, Councilman Conway, move favorable. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
Can we get that music back, so I can think about it for a minute before I cast my vote?
Councilman Dorsey.
I'll just vote yes, it's okay. I'll jam out over here.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilman Ramos?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes?
Yes, you called Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman, Councilman Ramos again.
Stop it. Okay, this bill will move to second reader, and now I'm going to put it in the faithful hands of Chair Conway. You're on, and I'm gone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next bill, Bill twenty-one dash zero zero nine zero, city streets closing, Edding Street and four ten-foot alleys bounded by Druid Hill Avenue, Gold Street, Division Street, and Baker Street, for the purpose of condemning and closing Edding Street and, and four ten-foot alleys bounded by Druid Hill Avenue, Gold Street, Division Street, and Baker Street, as shown in a plat numbered three hundred and thirty-seven A, twenty-eight A, and filed in the Office of the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on June eighth, 2021, and it was sponsored by the Council President at the request of the administration, specifically the Department of Transportation. Any questions from the committee members? All right, seeing no questions, we'll hear from the agency representatives, and we'll start off with the City Solicitors' Office.
Good afternoon, Chair. This is Vic Turbler from the City Law Department. My report notes that we've got some ancient references to DPW in this bill, and the Department of Transportation, I believe, is, is asking for amendments that DPW references that occur in Section One, Section Four, and Section Five be replaced with references to the Department of Transportation, which now basically oversees this particular project. So, subject to those amendments, then the Law Department is prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Excellent, thank you, Vic. Next up, we've got the Department of Planning.
Good afternoon, again, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, or Committee, this street closing request first came to the Planning Commission on November thirteenth of 2020, as part of their Master Planning Authority, where they found that the assembly of these properties, most of which were already owned by the city, would, upon completion of that assembly, render the, the street and the rights-of-way no longer necessary for a public purpose, they could be closed and assembled properties, would then be developed into a park. Then the bill itself was referred back to the Planning Commission, which is routine on June twenty-fourth of this year, where they unanimously recommended approval.
Excellent, thank you, Eric. Next, we've got the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison to the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our bill report in support of this legislation.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next, we've got the Department of Transportation.
Mr. Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report in support of Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero nine zero. This is necessary for the creation of Cab's Callaway Legends Park, so we are, we are absolutely looking forward to seeing the finished product after legislation moves forward and the park comes to fruition. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Liam. And last but not least, the Baltimore Development Corporation. Do we have anybody on the line from BDC?
Raven is in the chat, hold on a moment. Raven Thompson from BDC states that she stands by her department, her agency's report.
All right, thank you, and that was favorable. Any questions from committee members? Questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, so the, the buildings that are around the, that are, because when you look at the plat, the buildings are still there, so the buildings are gone, and I don't know who this goes to, I guess, DOT, or, yeah.
Yeah, the, most of the buildings around there are gone, if my memory serves me correctly, and I know Kaboom put in a, a playground there years ago, so that it already is kind of functioning as a kind of de facto park space, but I think these, this legislation will kind of help us to do something more permanent there. But most, most of the buildings on the property, the parcel that's being consulted, most of the buildings are gone, it's mostly green space now.
And so, just taking away the street just allows for basically no cars to be right there, so it's a better situation for the park, I guess.
Yeah, think of it as like a, a square block right now, right? But in the middle of that block is an alley, splitting it in half up the middle, so opening and closing allows that parcel to just be a solid green space parcel, rather than two split-up ones.
Okay.
That's essentially, that's essentially what this is doing.
Okay, I got it now, thank you very much. And then, the Law Department referenced amendments, I don't see anything, or is that within the bill, that all the DOT, the DPW references are in, are referenced DOT?
So the, I'm sorry, those amendments are sent in the report, is that correct?
The Law Department makes reference to those amendments in my report, but I thought Transportation was offering the amendments.
Yeah, I, and I apologize, I have, I have them from legislative reference.
They're not in the, they're not in the materials that we received ahead of time.
Okay, so that is on me. I am not familiar with that amendment process. I should have sent this to you guys before, but I'm, I'm going to share this with Jennifer Coats now. These are technical amendments.
And Victor, can you explain one more time the nature of these amendments? I remember it has something to do with DPW and them being needed.
Right, they, the, this is boilerplate language, and that has been placed in all of, all of these closing documents, or these, these bills, when we have closings, and they refer to Department of Public Works, rather than the Department of Transportation, and that's because at one point, closings were in DPW and now they're in Transportation. So these, these amendments go to, if you look at Section One, the reference to Department of Public Works, the same with Sections Two, Four, and Five, so those, the members are basically striking DPW and putting in DOT in those locations.
Got it. Liam, can you, you do have the, the drafted amendments?
They were just sent to you, as well as Jennifer, I have Victor CC, and I apologize, in the future, this will get to Jennifer or the committee staff ahead of time, it's my, believe it or not, first time submitting amendments in my role as DOT Legislative Manager.
All good, all good. There's a lot of first times here, myself chairing this committee.
I can make Liam Davis the presenter, and he can share them if you'd like.
That would be great. And as I understand, this is a. And as I understand, this is a technical amendment. It, it boil up language, we see this frequently in bills where DPW wants oversaw these responsibilities. So I standard language clearly, um, and I think we should be able to move forward, uh, with that. Uh, Liam, you're muted.
Jennifer, I'm getting my PC logged in on this, so I will be right there. Okay, so there should be another Liam Davis on there with no, um, with no, no camera on, and I'll be able to share the screen once given permission.
You have permission.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, so here's the amendments. So simply on page one, line eighteen, you're striking Public Works. You're submitting transportation. Page three, striking, uh, strike beginning with public uh, in line thirty-six down through and including works in line thirty-seven. We're gonna substitute transportation on that page. Similar technical amendment on line forty-one. Uh, and amendment number two is on page three and line twenty-two after regulations inserted period. And that same page strike beginning with adopted in line twenty-two through and including period in line twenty-three. So it's really just updating to reflect, um, that right-of-way division, which has bounced around, to be completely honest, from General Services to DPW, and now it's a DOT, and we're keeping them. They're, they're, they've found their home now.
Good. Thank you, uh, Liam.
Mr. Chair, I could just make a comment on that.
Uh, yes, please, Councilman Dorsey.
Uh, before long, um, one of the annual kind of routine corrective bills that comes to the council will, I guess, come up for a hearing at some point. Um, and I've asked for an amendment for that bill to, uh, correct language in the existing code where there is some references to DGS regarding certain right, right-of-way issues. Um, so we're looking to get that, uh, that kind of stuff straightened out as well, substitute where it says DGS uh, with DOT. So similar to what we're dealing with here. Just wanted to note that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Um, I want to give folks an opportunity. Are there any questions about the two amendments lined out here as explained by both the OT and the Law Department?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Councilwoman Ramos?
The, so the, um, whatever it takes to transfer between agencies has been completed. Because I'm, I have a situation in my district where it's taken a long time for the transfer from DPW to, uh, uh, DG, or excuse me, DOT to DGS and DPW. This just takes forever. And so I just want to make sure that that's already completed. And then this is just, uh, these changes in the amendments are just to reflect that.
So I'm not familiar specifically with what, uh, you're talking about, Councilwoman, but really these amendments are, are for something that's already completed. And what that already completed thing is, is right-of-way division, the city's right-of-way office has formally been placed under the umbrella of Baltimore City DOT. Uh, previously, it was under DPW, and before that, it was under Department of General Services. So it's, um, this is just updating the language to reflect that, uh, right-of-way division is within transportation.
So, but the, the, the main, the actual maintenance, so like if I go on Code Map, which I can do right now, and look this up, is, it's gonna say DOT is responsible for maintenance?
It's an alley, so it might just come up as nothing. Um, but in theory, uh, if it were like a, you know, if, if it's a, you know, public right-of-way, yeah, that's, that's definitely ours. Alley, the, this has nothing, the legislation itself isn't really determining, or the amendments aren't determining which agency controls, you know, what parcel essentially. Um, the opening and closing of alleys has always kind of been managed under the right-of-way division. These amendments are just saying right-of-way division is in fact under DOT.
That, that's right.
Okay, so it's not really, you know, who is responsible for maintenance actually is the one that's doing the right-of-way, the closing. It's actually DOT doing the closing. Okay. I got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions, uh, about the amendments before we go into public testimony? Uh, Liam, if you could take down the, the amendments. I just make sure there are no questions here. I don't see any hands. All right, we're gonna go into public testimony. Are there any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
All right, and any callers?
David Fram, I'll unmute him.
All right, David, you have me.
Chairman Conway, good afternoon. I just wanted to sort of elaborate on what Liam, um, what, what Liam had addressed to Councilwoman Ramos. So Councilwoman Ramos, when we put the bill forth to close the streets and alleys for the proposed Cab Callaway Park, we used, it was a word document that we put language into, and I, I will take the blame on this one. We did not catch the error of Public Works. But the, the Department of Transportation controls and oversees the closing of streets and alleys. Um, as for the, if, if it's property in your district, you may certainly call me if we need to transfer property between a different agency, and if, if we fall in behind on that, I'll certainly assist you as much as I can. Um, but as for the closing bill, this is, um, I believe this is for the Cab Callaway Park. The Department of Planning has received a grant and is working with Recreation and Parks in conjunction to make this into a really neat area for the neighborhood. And this, these closed streets and alleys will allow the park to flourish and, and, and use it to its full potential. And, and that's all.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarity, and I will give you a call. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Chairman. Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, any other calls?
Is that okay?
Chairman Conway, there's one other caller, Scott Weaver.
Uh, Scott Weaver?
Uh, that is not my, that is not me. So I, I, thank you, thank you, Chairman, that, that.
I wasn't.
Not me. Uh, no, uh, uh, we have no comment. I have no comments. Thank you.
What, what's your, what was your question?
Um, yeah, can you, Jennifer, can you mute the person who's talking? Awesome. Thank you. Um, any other callers on the line?
No other callers.
All right, excellent. That'll conclude public testimony. Um, and to that end, we will, uh, are there any other questions from the committee before we move to, uh, before we open for a motion to accept the amendment, the, the two amendments? All right, no questions. I'll accept a motion to.
Uh, move the amendment favorable.
Thank you. Dorsey seconded by Ramos. Chair Middleton is absent. Bullock?
Hi.
Conway, yes. Dorsey?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe we can just do a voice vote on the amendment.
We're halfway through now, so we'll just go and, and finish up. Um, Glover?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
And Stokes?
Yes.
All right, the bill, the amendments pass, and I entertain a motion to, um, move it favorable with amendments.
Was the bill favorable with amendments?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Glover. Bullock? Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Excellent. Conway, yes. Dorsey?
Only if you can get me that music back.
Well, we got one more bill. We might get it again.
All right, yes.
Uh, Glover?
Yes, sir.
Ramos?
Yes.
And Stokes? Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, the bill passes unanimously. Uh, and it moves to second reader, and we'll move to our third and final bill, which is Bill twenty-one dash zero one zero zero, City Property Grant of Easements. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to grant two perpetual easements to the Maryland State Highway Administration for the maintenance of two stormwater drainage inlets along Delaney Valley Road through the property of the Lockraven Reservoir in Baltimore County, Maryland, as shown in plat sixty-one fifty-three, six-one five-three-six, billed in the State Highway Administration, State Roads Commission, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and it was sponsored by the Council President at the request of the administration, specifically, uh, the Department of Transportation. Any questions about the bill before we move forward? All right, um, we'll move on to agency reports, starting with the city solicitor's office. Uh, anyone from the Law Department can speak to the bill? Did we lose somebody?
Mr. Chair, it looks like, uh, Hillary Rowley was, uh, an attendee.
I, I see Hillary there now.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Uh, yes, we approved the bill for form and legal sufficiency. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Hillary. Next, we've got the Department of Transportation.
Mr. Chair, this is a, it's a pretty unique bill. Um, so this is out in Baltimore County. Um, this part of Baltimore County, Delaney Valley Road, goes through, um, Baltimore City property at Lockraven Reservoir. So just as a reminder, the city owns thousands and thousands of acres outside of city limits. Um, most of it, to my knowledge, is Water Department related. Um, so anytime property that is under the designation of a city agency, um, anytime that a city agency-controlled property has to go through some sort of real estate agreement or selling of land or easement, those are managed by DOT's right-of-way division, which is why this is a DOT bill. Um, and long story short, is SHA is requesting, State Highway Administration is requesting, um, these little easements so they can put in some additional stormwater infra- infrastructure. And, uh, location is somewhere between Timonium Road and, I believe, Old Bosley. So there's a stretch within there where these stormwater uh, um, easements would go. So that is the, the bill and the long and short of it. And DOT stands by its report, which is support.
Excellent. Thank you, Liam. Uh, next up, we've got the Parking Authority of Baltimore City.
Good afternoon, committee members. This is Brett Thorne with the Parking Authority. We do not oppose passage of the bill.
Thank you, Brett. Uh, next, we've got the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James for the Department of Finance. Uh, we stand by our report. We do not oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Uh, next, we've got the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We defer to the Department of Transportation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Uh, next, we've got the Department of Planning.
Uh, Planning has no objection and defers to DOT.
All right, thank you. Uh, next, the Department of Real Estate.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Casey Kelleher reporting for the Department of Real Estate. Uh, we stand by our report. Um, no objection, deferring to the Department of Real Estate. Thank you. I mean, Department, sorry, for my transportation.
All right, thank you, Casey. Um, want to give a shout out to Mara for becoming a mom. Congratulations. Welcome back. Been a while since we saw you. Um, I want to move, uh, move there, thereafter to, uh, questions from committee members. Any questions about this bill? Uh, Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I know that the, any, uh, my understanding is that the, um, property that we own up in Baltimore County is, they're directly related to our water system. So they're putting in Maryland Highway Administration, um, because this particular highway is, you know, we don't have Maryland Highway in the city, so, you know, they, um, do the work in other places. And they're putting in stormwater inlets. And I'm wondering, have we done the study, I would assume so, I hope so, that says, you know, the stormwater is actually going to a stormwater drain and not into our water system?
It's a great question, uh, Councilwoman. I may have to defer. I don't know if David is on this call, but I believe, or I think David has been elevated, thankfully. Um, but I believe what would, what would end up needing to be installed would, in all likelihood, have to be approved by NDE. Is that correct, David?
Um, I, I think, um, Councilwoman and, and the Honorable Chairman Conway, so this is a companion bill. The two inlets that if the committee agrees to move the bill forward that are going to be granted, they're a companion to a bill that was approved in the last session. So the, the bill that was approved last session had the stormwater pipes that Councilwoman Ramos is asking about, but the State Highway Administration identified two other locations for inlets. So in answer, so the short and sweet of it is, Councilwoman, is the two inlets will be collecting rainwater off of Delaney Valley Road and then going into a stormwater pipe that was approved in a council bill from last session.
And so that, that, uh, pipe, I guess, has been installed now, and they just decided that there's some flooding in this other area, and they want to make sure that there's an inlet there so that that stormwater doesn't go into our water. Is that what they're saying?
I, exactly. It's a little bit more detailed than that. It's a little bit too far away to go into the, into Lockraven. It's more of a ponding issue that if the rainwater wasn't directed to the inlets, it could possibly sit on the road and collect, and heaven forbid, if there's a freeze thaw, it'll freeze and cause, um, could cause some accidents.
So we don't own the road. We own the, the land adjacent on both sides to where the, um, inlet is supposed to be?
Yes.
Okay, because the plat that I see just has the road and the two inlets. Um, I'd, I'd like to be able to kind of see geographically where it is, you know, related to the land that we, we actually own.
The, the description that I read was it is between Timonium and Old Bosley. And I know that that's kind of a wide swath of land, but that does narrow it down a little bit.
Yeah, well, for those of us who have stayed in our little fourteenth district bubble for eighteen months, it would be great to get a, uh, map of some sort to see it. Um, and uh, because I'm just curious kind of where we own, and then, you know, State Highway has, um, just the one highway. I think that's pretty interesting. And then if someone could refer to me to the old bill, that would be great, too.
Of course.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Dorsey.
Yeah, to Councilwoman Ramos, I think you probably want to talk to DPW about this. I'm virtually certain that all of the stormwater in this area does go into our drinking water impounds. Anything that's in the stormwater catchment area is part of that. The, the, what do you call it? The watershed. Here we go. I got a little bit more of that. But, you know, I come from, I come for what I come for. But I mean, if it's within the watershed area, which this absolutely is, being north of Lock Raven like that, it, that, that water is definitely flowing into our Lock Raven impound, whether by groundwater or by stormwater systems, I'm virtually certain of it. We basically drink Baltimore County's stormwater. At the end of the day, we are processing and drinking Baltimore County and Carroll County and part of Hartford County's stormwater that runs off of their streets.
No, and I appreciate that. I guess I was just making sure that, like, the trash that goes with stormwater doesn't go into, you know what I mean? That's, that's where I was headed with that.
Not to interrupt everybody, but I do have the bill from the previous term, and that's Council Bill 16-0649. So that actually predates the previous term. It was two terms ago.
All right, and you guys want to dig a little more in that? Any further questions to that end, or? And maybe David?
We don't have any, we don't have a bill report from DOT, excuse me, DPW on this, or even anybody from Maryland Highway, do we?
No, they were not referred.
No. T. No, no, they weren't referred to this bill.
Is this time-sensitive, Mr. Chair? Or Mr. Fram?
Mr. Davis, Liam, is this time-sensitive, or Mr. Fram?
I think ideally we would get, get this through to address the puddling issue because it sounds hazardous. So in that sense, it is time-sensitive.
One moment, folks.
We can, would it be possible to work with DPW and SHA to get some additional items ahead of the next council meeting before second reader vote?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I have questions. So, yeah, I mean, I, I get where we're coming from. That's why I was asking if this was time-sensitive.
I mean, it's, given that there's a potentially hazardous situation that, at, at that location that needs the, you know, which is why the storm.
It sounds like there's been, it's been the same situation for years and years, and they're finally actually addressing it. So I don't want anybody to slide on the ice. But it sounds like they've been having this problem and are finally doing something about it.
Question, and I'm not sure, David or Liam, if you know, is there any funding attached, attached to this?
It's, none of it would be city funds.
None of it's city funds?
Yeah.
Is any of that funding, state funding likely time-bail?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. I think I feel more comfortable holding off on this and allowing us to come back. Jennifer, how do you, how do you, how do you think that works if Chair Middleton, Vice President Milton, come back and finish this one off? I don't want to rush through this.
And I, if we could get GPW to the next work session, that would be really helpful. And possibly Maryland Highway, since they're asking for this.
Okay.
I know that they're not compelled to, but it would be great.
All right, so what, what we're gonna do, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to this, and we can work with the committee and Vice President Middleton to get this scheduled before the next council hearing. And we can make sure to get that information back in advance. So we'll, we'll revisit this and have a vote on this, this one out today. Councilman Dorsey, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I, I would ask that we maybe reconsider and just try to move this bill forward. We're trying to give, the, the bill is seeking to give the, just the right to maintain this to the state. And it says right in the bill that any, any construction has to be approved by the city of Baltimore before it happens. We're just giving them the right to maintain it. It says right in the bill that we maintain kind of a final say on what they're building.
So if I'm reading this correctly, there's already the storm drains there, and we're just getting them, giving them opportunity to maintain it?
I mean, that was, was in the summary that I read, but it also says that if anything is being constructed, it has to get our approval.
And, and that would be advised, overseen by DOT?
I imagine, I, I believe since it's on DPW property, they would have jurisdiction over approving, approving the plans once the easement is executed.
That sounds correct to me as well.
Right, in this bill, it just says the city. It doesn't say DPW.
Well, it's, the property is controlled by DPW. So, I mean, whenever something's done on a property that's owned by an agency, that, that agency has to, you know, approve it, whether it's through a right-of-entry agreement or, you know, an easement like this.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. I know the chairwoman is not here. What are we gonna do with this? Because the chairwoman's not here. And are we gonna assess it till the chairwoman comes back? Or what's going on? A little confused where we're doing.
So Councilman Stokes, I think we're trying to figure that out now. And I think what I'm understanding from the bill is that we still have the, the authority to determine what can be built there. And I think Councilman, excuse me, Councilwoman Ramos's concern is that how, she's concerned about how we manage the stormwater. And it seems that we have the ability to manage that, which is what Councilman Dorsey just brought up. My initial inclination was to hold off. I think we're trying to figure out whether or not that is the wisest decision. Let's do this. Let's continue here through. Before we move on, are there any other questions about the bill? All right, we're gonna move to public testimony. And let's see, are there any hands raised at the moment?
There are no hands raised, and Dave, David Fram is the only caller.
Okay. And David has already spoken, but if there's any additional insight that David can add to this.
Chairman Conway, sir, I have, I have nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. So I, I guess the.
Mr. Chair, I think that, if you don't mind, I, I mean, I do have a lot of questions, but I don't know that it's actually relevant to the bill. So if, because I think I'm just trying to learn about all of that around us, and I don't think we've had a proper briefing about, you know, all of the things that are happening around Lock Raven Reservoir and all of that related to our water system, which was one of the questions we just asked DPW in that series of questions, so that we sent them. So, because that context would help me with this. But I think, you know, it's, however you want to do it is fine with me. I'll continue to ask those questions, and we can try to get the answers about how all that, how that works. You know, what does maintenance mean? I think the councilman is, you know, looking at the bill and the summaries, it's just, you know, giving permission for them to do, but everything still has to come through us anyway. So I don't really know why the bill is even needed, but, so there's. Anyway, it would be nice that if we had DPW here and others to talk about all of this sort of big picture stuff related to all of that. But that's all. And if we have to do that in a separate setting, but still move the bill, again, I just don't know if it's time-sensitive or not.
Yeah, I think re, reading through the analysis here, it looks like we still have the ability to control what would be built there, how it's structured. And I mean, your, your questions are great questions. I, I think it's a little bit aside from the point of the bill, but still great questions. And I think it'd be helpful to have answers to those. That said, I think we do have enough, and I think enough protection potentially, enough protection to move forward, I think. And so I guess the question is, Councilman Dorsey, would you want to make that a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move the bill favorable, but I do want to just make a comment. I spent a lot of time last term digging into what in the world goes on at Lock Raven and Pretty Boy and all these places that the city owns and where really critical infrastructure exists and really critical parts of our way of life originate that so rarely get any critical attention because it's not in my city council district. It's not in somebody else's city council district. It's not. And it's, and it's not owned by the county council members whose council district it in. They just want their residents to be able to go and tread trails through our reservoir. You, you, we, there are a lot of really critical conversations to be had about these things. And I, for one, would love to share the, I feel like the wealth of information that I gained over the last term and would certainly love to not be the only person banging that drum as I felt it was. So I'm glad to have a, a separate conversation to give kind of what I feel is the lay of the land there, and then maybe figure out what we can do collectively to take up greater concerns. With that, move the bill favorable.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Have a motion on the floor. Do you have a second?
Second, Glover.
Seconded by Councilman Glover. Excellent. Roll call. We're gonna move favorable. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Conway, yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes, can I explain my vote?
Yes.
I want to thank my colleague from the third. I definitely will take you up on that. And maybe it's worth actually a larger hearing about that relationship because we're not giving a lot of attention up there, and I think it deserves a lot of attention. I have a lot of questions, and this bill just sparked all those questions back up. So, you know, with that said, I, you know, happy to work with the councilman on, on that, but also maybe even bring it to a larger hearing. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I vote yes.
Thank you, Councilman Ramos. And finally, Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Thank you. This bill passes, and we'll be ready for second reader at our next council meeting. I want to thank you all, one, for navigating that sort of awkward situation, but two, I, I agree, Councilman Dorsey, that this is, having these properties on no man's land, I think is something that it is our responsibility to be on top of this. So we should ask all these questions. And I think great questions by Councilwoman Ramos. Yes, I look forward to having that discussion later on.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank the committee for their trust in, in DOT and our fellow city agencies in advancing the bills today. And I will make myself available, Councilwoman Ramos, to any questions or concerns or conversation that you would like to have. It's certainly an interesting topic. You know, looking at the city's regional presence, a lot of it ties to our regional water utility. But there's even some other historic, you know, additional copycats in there. So thanks again to everybody. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, Liam. Thank everyone for attending, and have a great day.